Transition of people in the office, I think it'd probably be the fairest way to do it.
I'll have my daughter research if it's a good project. I'll hand it to the egg.
You guys run right out? Stick around when we go on executive session of the council. Did you see this? That's fine.
How was your vacation?
I call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Mr. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Here.
Mrs. Holt. Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Ridgewitz.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Anthony.
Here.
Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Sillsby.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Galetti.
Here.
Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Orlett. Miss Schneider.
Here.
I believe Dallas Alderman-Holt called.
That's right, she did email.
Said she wouldn't be here. Okay, all roll call department heads.
Police Chief Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Horr. City Attorney Garrett Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle. Jamie Maitritt. Tim Gregowitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville. City Treasurer Dean Hart.
Here.
Okay, I have a number of department heads who are excused tonight. Emily Foltz, Jamie Maitritt is excused, but don't come back on her quick, but she does return later in the week. So, we'll be glad to have her back. Royce Carlisle's excused. Tom Pore's at a meeting tonight. Acting Battalion Chief Brent Main is here on his behalf. And Mike Parks is here for Chuck. Is there anybody else I'm missing? Okay, with that ladies and gentlemen, I would ask you to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My first opening comments this evening will be for all the Aldermen and anyone who does speak from the public during public participation to please speak into the microphones each and every time. We're having trouble with the newness of the cable channel and recording. They're telling me that they're still having difficulty with picking up the audio. So, we all have to be more conscious of each and every time, Aldermen. Please speak into the microphones. Also, at this time, I want to tell everybody that when we do have public participation, please make sure we follow the outline in the agenda for as good character. Also, same goes for public participation about speaking into the microphone. And what else was I gonna tell you? The emergency warning. If we would have a storm warning, heaven forbid while we're in here, the officers in the back of the room would guide us to the stairway, which is right across from the clerk's office, to go downstairs to the sheltered area that's designated for storms of that such nature. If we had a fire, smoke, other reasons to leave the building, we would ask that you carefully go out the front door, be careful in crossing Washington Street, and please proceed over to the area in front of the county courthouse sign where we might all meet and kind of take account of the people you came with or the people that you know were in here to make sure everybody's accounted for. We hope that doesn't happen, but unfortunately, as you know, during the middle of night last night, there was a tornado warning put out and the hyper reach, I know it rang my phone, and we got up and went to the basement. And apparently, there was some tornado activity out in the Milstott-Columbia area. Never came down there, but fortunately, that is in place. Our sirens did go off, and Tom did tell me today that there are two sirens that are being checked after today's test. So, we're working on that in case any of you heard that there was an issue with the siren. He is working on that with, I believe it's Pyramid. So, just to report on that. At this time, I will open public participation. Please wait till I call on you and then step to the microphone, give your name and address, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes. Is there anyone this evening? Yes, sir. I recognize that gentleman.
Chief Bill Clay, Belleville. At the special city council meeting on August 25th, Alderman Hayden and Schneider voiced the following concerns. Some of them were individually, some of them were collectively. And this is my summary of those concerns. Information regarding the candidates were withheld. Information was not shared with committee members regarding candidates who were not selected. No background information on the candidates were presented to the committee. Partial information should have been provided to the committee. A lack of communication and the claim that I should know what the committee needs without asking. This was an extraordinary departure from the established practice of thoroughly vetting candidates to the committee that dated back to at least 2009. A special police and fire committee meeting should have been scheduled to vet the candidates prior to the special council meeting. Allegations, implications, that something was amiss, something was awry, some impropriety of failure to follow established standards was at work here, followed by an admonition that they would get to the bottom of it. I had no recollection of ever vetting police candidates to the police and fire committee in such a manner and was unaware of the so-called established practice of doing so. I had my secretary pull the agendas and the minutes from the police and fire committee all the way back to 2008. Additionally, I had her provide a list of all the officers hired from 2008 through 2014. There were a total of 19 officers hired prior to the 8:25 meeting. This is what we found. In 2008, three officers were hired. There were three motions. In 2009, three officers were hired. There was one motion for two officers. In 2010, two officers were hired, no motions. In 2011, three officers hired, no motions. In 2012, three officers hired, no motions. In 2013, three officers hired, one motion for two. There were a total of seven officers hired by motion. Twelve were not, were not even presented to the committee. I found a total of five motions to fill the vacancies left by resigning and retiring officers from 2008 through 2014. Additionally, I found no significant candidate identifying information was revealed to the committee. No background information was presented to the committee. No polygraph, no drug screen, or other preconditional hire information was presented to the committee. No non-selected candidate information or reasons for passing over them was ever presented to the committee. None of this information was ever requested by any committee members. No concerns or complaints of the police hire-vetting process was ever voiced by any committee members. No committee members ever requested, ever requested, the reasons or resignation letters from officers or any employees until 8:25. And yet, this claim was asserted that information was being withheld and the established vetting process was being ignored in this instance. The past practices and actions taken by the police and fire committee clearly show no such practice of vetting or vetting protocol of this type of specificity was ever used by the committee. So, what caused all this righteous indignation? This perceived injustice, this wrong? There was no deviation from the selection process utilized by the police and fire committee since 2008. There was no standard established practice of vetting candidates in such a rigorous manner. So, I am at a loss to explain this claim, but I will not judge people's motives. In my view, ambush antics were used to claim or imply some improper conduct. I think such actions are destructive, I think they're divisive, and I think they hinder communications. But perhaps the perceived payoff is worth the cost. If you are so inclined to use such antics in the future, I strongly urge you to have some facts or a sliver of evidence to legitimize the claims that you make, because I promise you that I will have them. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone else in public participation? Hearing none, I close public participation. We will move into the next part of the meeting, which is presentations, recognition. The, we are starting as of yesterday, the month of September. Where did this year go? The new month means a new character word. The character word of the month is respect, meaning showing regard for self, others, property, and those in authority. Moving on to the next item, I would like to recommend and ask for someone to make a motion to appoint to the Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term, Mr. Ryan Wallace. And I believe there's a little bio in your packet. Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Epstein.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. I don't know how you want to handle these. Do you want to do them separate or?
Separate.
Separate, okay. We have the regular city council meeting minutes held from August 4th, 2014. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the regular city council meeting August 4th, 2014. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Alderman, Kinsella.
I think the one that appears in our packet was probably a first draft that accidentally got delivered to us, but I remember reading it, the final draft before, and it was fine. So, it's just this one is very rough. It's okay.
So, okay, Alderman, Randall.
Yeah, what I noted, okay, is that there are exclusions with respect to the Aldermen who made a motion and those who seconded the motion, and that is throughout the document itself. Also, I wanted to note that when it came to the appointments and reappointments, that I abstained on those. I was not part of the members of the council who voted aye on that roll call.
Okay. Let's duly note if you note that. Alderman Schneider.
Yeah, mine was the, I was too, listened to the page and had when I had suggested what you had said to me about meeting of August 4th, 2014. Alderman Schneider would like the below added to the minutes.
Please speak into the microphone.
Alderman Schneider would like the below added to the minutes for approval. Alderman Schneider stated she has one more. Mayor Eckhart stated Alderman Anthony will speak first. Alderman Schneider stated she had her hand up before he did. Mayor Eckhart said, "He is tired of her sarcasm. Put your hand down and I will call on you after Alderman Anthony has the floor." Mayor Eckhart stated, "It is one sarcastic thing after another." Mayor Eckhart asked Alderman Schneider to change her tone a little bit. That was submitted from the minutes when I asked it to be corrected, and you asked for it to be exactly verbatim, the word for word.
Your Honor, I'd ask what set of minutes that is. I don't think it's August 4th.
August 4th.
Was it that the comment was?
Yeah, the only reason why we're bringing those minutes back is to add, you know, what Miss Schneider would like to be included in the minutes.
I don't have a problem if you all want to accept that.
Yes.
You'll accept that?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the August 4th minutes in my packet. I have the 18th and the 25th and Alderman Schneider's statement, but I don't have the other minutes. So, do you have another copy of that?
If there's, I'm not sure what I'm hearing here. I don't have each of your packets in front of me, and if there's some deviation, I can't answer that. We have a motion and a second to approve the August 4th minutes and have them accept and file with the exception of adding Alderman Schneider's paragraph that she included in the packet with her concerns to my response to her. With that addendum going in there, if you're ready to vote on accepting the minutes as that, I'm ready to call for a vote. Anything else? All in favor of approving the minutes as stated, as you have in front of you or in your packet with that exception added from Alderman Schneider and having them filed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. We have the regular city council meeting of August 18th. What's your pleasure? Motion by Alderman Seibert. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schneider. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor of approving the regular council meeting from August 18th and having them filed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Do I have a motion about the special council meeting of August 25th?
Yes, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to receive and file the special council meeting of August 25th, 2014. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anthony. Do I hear a discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a change on page three. And let's see, if you go to the second full paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 lines down, the first full sentence starts Alderman Hayden asked why there were three resignations and goes on. And then at one point, it says Mayor Eckhart, Alderman Hayden, Chief Clay discussed the remark of something hidden. I never used the word "something hidden." I'd actually like to have the minutes changed and strike that and insert what was actually said at that point. The recording timer marker picks up at 14:48. Alderman Hayden, I'm trying to figure out why we had three resignations, because I think that's highly unusual. Eckhart begins to speak, but didn't. Clay interrupts, "Oh, I will address that at the end. I have to address that, Eckhart. We addressed that in finance. Had you been there earlier, Hayden, I could not have been there." Eckhart, okay, so there's nothing hidden. Hayden, I hope not. Eckhart, Chief, could you explain? Chief Clay, there is not, let me be clear about that, there is not. So, if you're going to make those kinds of implications, you have to have something to back that up, sir. Hayden, I'm not making those implications. Clay, yes, you are. Hayden, I'm trying to be informed about what is going on. Clay, let me be straight up and clear with you. There's nothing about that. The first person who resigned was 6:30, 2014. He's a military officer. He resigned to take a full-time job at the military. He has been gone from our department since 6:20 of 2012. It's coincidence that he chose to resign on the 30th of June. Let me take the next guy. That guy was an officer who's been with the department for some time. He is from Washington State. That is his home state. He's been trying to get back there since last year. He finally got a job and he returned there. He resigned on the 9th of July. Let's take the next guy. He resigned for personal reasons on the 26th, or 24th of July, excuse me. So, there were three resignations in 24 days. There's no conspiracy, no secret, no intent. Hayden, I never said that. Well, sir, I'm just. Clay, well, sir, I'm just sorry. That's the way I felt. Eckhart gavelled to Hayden, let him finish, and then Clay went on and stated, "That's the way you delivered that to me anyway." After that, we then had to try to fill those positions. I attempted to have a special meeting with the Police and Fire Commission so that I could take these before the city council regular meeting. I could have gotten this done before that period of time. Those three had left just because there were psychological tests to be done, there were polygraphs to be done. I just can't order those up. We have to schedule that for that. This is, there was a drug testing that had to be done. It could not all be done in that window. That is, that is what that was, and that is why we are here today. Nothing more. Recording time marker ends at 17:09. And now I'm gonna slip these to the clerk. I'd like the actual discussion to be in there.
Alderman Schmidt?
Before we approve these minutes, could we table this for the special meeting until the next council meeting, that we could get these typed up so we could follow that?
I think that probably would be a good thing, that everybody could have them and if necessary, go back and listen to the tape.
And could I make another comment on the minutes? Maybe we, instead of having these massive paragraphs that are very difficult to read, we could have whoever's typing these up hit return a few times? It would make it a lot easier to read.
Gotcha. Okay, so.
That's fine with me, Your Honor. I just want to make it very clear. I never used the word "hidden," never used the word "conspiracy" or anything to that effect. You were the one that made those statements.
So, who made the original motion to approve these minutes?
I did, except.
Well, I just, it was recommended. You made the recommendation?
Recommendation.
So, you're making an amendment to the minutes that we table them till the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
And do I have a second to that recommendation for table? Second by Alderman Ridgewitz, the motion to table the minutes tonight of this particular meeting, the 25th, until the next regular city council meeting. We have a motion, we have to act on the table first. A motion to table to the next city council meeting. All in favor of tabling till then, till we can, everybody get a chance to read what Alderman Hayden submitted. Copies, we get copies out to them, Dallas, please.
Yes, we can do it.
And till everybody gets a chance to read that and do a little homework. All in favor of tabling to the next minute, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries to table. We don't need to vote on the other one, do we, Garrett? It's three points. Okay, so we'll table the 25th. We approve the other two, okay? We're moving on. We are now into claims, payroll, and disbursements. What's your pleasure?
Yes, Your Honor, I want to make a motion to pay the claims, payrolls, and disbursements. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oral reports. Don't think we have any this evening. We'll go on to communications.
A communication from Sevens requesting permission to close the first block of South High Street between East Maine and East Washington on Sunday, September 14th, 2014, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for pedal for the Pooch's event.
Let me request, be quiet.
Motion by Alderman Seibert. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of approving this request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
B, communication from Lindenwood University Belleville requesting to hold their third annual car and truck show on Sunday, October 11th, 2014, starting at 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Lindenwood will request assistance from the police department. Details to follow closer to the event.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schneider. Discussion. All in favor of approving this request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
C, communication from St. Elizabeth's Hospital requesting permission to decorate their campus and surrounding downtown areas with light posts and bump-out railing on East-West Main Street for six blocks from the fountain, as well as for three blocks north and south from the fountain on 159, with pink ribbons to support breast health awareness. The ribbons will be put up on September 30th and removed October 31st. Along with the ribbon flyers will be disseminated to downtown businesses to explain the ribbons.
Motion be approved.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Sillsby. The only thing I would ask to that, and we should do this period, when they tie these ribbons up downtown, I wish when we respond, if you'd all agree to this, when the clerk responds that this has been approved, which I'm all in favor of it, if the ribbons get extremely worn, that they come and replace them. Sometimes the weather hits hard and they, not just this group, but they get really beat up and they're out there for 30 days, and some of them start to look horrible. So, if we could still.
I'll make that stipulation part of the motion.
You agree to that stipulation, that we put that into response, to please monitor them during that 30-day period so they look in good taste? All in favor of approving that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
D, communication from Belleville Historical Society requesting to change their plan to locate the Walk of Fame from the northeast quadrant to the northwest quadrant of, and discussion on cost.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'm all in favor of this Walk of Fame, but I was approached by a couple of people who live in the area, and they would like it, or rather have it placed on the sidewalks on East or West Main Street rather than back in that quart quadrant. And I'd like that to be brought to court.
And Mr. Seibert, Alderman Seibert, certainly when we talked about this originally, that was the request, right, Larry? And my question back was, okay, I'm not against it, but we have to demo the sidewalk slabs and we have to pour them back. And my comment was, while the Historical Society was stating they would pay for the plaques, but the labor of tearing up sidewalk and pouring it back down when our streetscape's just been done a few years ago is going to be, and we didn't, we never did check that, did we, Tim? To tear out sidewalk and put it back? But what is it basically, a slab? Do you have it figured out by a slab?
I don't have a cost there. It's usually about $8 a square foot.
So, the question was money, just like when, and I told Larry, I have no personal problem with changing the quadrant. But Tim did some calculations and came to my office the other day, and Tim, even with this particular proposal, there's about, how much to set the fountain, to put these?
I got an estimate to do it for $9,500 for the new location. We'll put the, the, and do it the way the plans. Through Hanks, our sidewalk contractors.
So.
West Main Street is not a new contract.
Now, the one thing I had said at one time to Larry in my office, but this doesn't help it today or tomorrow. The engineering firm is currently doing engineering work on 6th to 17th. The area that the Historical Society has been involved with at 11th and Main is truly historic, and all those sidewalks going out that way are gonna be redone. Now, if we coordinated this effort when they were pouring the sidewalks, it's a whole different thing when we're paying to have the sidewalks done. But to tear them up and put new concrete back in, I think we have to get an exact cost if we were to put it in the sidewalk. And I think, I know I just saw Mr. Betts kind of act a little surprised with Tim's comment, but I think we gotta get this figure with, we have to use, we'd have to use the person we approved for the current year, I would imagine, unless we bid this out as a separate project, which could be done. But I think we have to follow our own rules there. But I think we have to get a firm, if there's almost $10,000 worth of concrete work to even put it on that quadrant, I know that's not in the budget. I'm in favor of this project, but we gotta do it appropriately. Yes, ma'am?
Am I understanding you to say that a suggestion would be to have it by the Rose Parks at 11th and West Main?
I just threw that out a while back.
That's a great idea.
When Larry first came to me and said he thought in the sidewalk was a good idea, and I said, "If we put it, go back and put it downtown, which would be very appropriate." Don't get me wrong.
Sure.
But we'd have to tear it up and put it back in. So, we'd be tearing up concrete that we put down in 2007 or '08 to put in new slabs and pour these plaques in them. The one comment I just thought of was, since we haven't done the streetscape yet from 6th to 17th, that, now I know that puts it off a little bit, but hopefully in the year to 18 months, we're gonna be doing that streetscape. The one comment I, I just thought of was, since we haven't done the streetscape yet from Sixth to Seventeenth, that, now, I know that puts it off a little bit, but hopefully in the year to eighteen months, we're gonna be doing that streetscape. There you could put it in, and I think we could coordinate it with whoever gets that bid to lay them in place, uh, as we do it, and there shouldn't be no extra charge. Would you think, Tim?
Well, I, we, we have it compared to the bid, so, yeah.
Alderman Schneider.
Yes, um, can we not leave it as the original plans? We've already approved it, and I think it would be more appropriate for it to stay uptown at the square. I'm not, and I'm quite sure nobody else is very picky about which side, as long as it stays uptown at the square. Down by the Rose Garden, that's not, that doesn't get seen by that many people. I think it needs to be up at the square.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I think it's a good program.
And we've already approved it, hasn't the money been approved for this?
Is, is it possible for us to research the idea of getting volunteer work to do the concrete work? Is it actually a game?
Yeah, there could be some volunteer work.
Was it, Mr. Seibert?
There could be volunteer work implied.
It, it could be, but I think, I think Tim was following your plan, what he told me, about laying a base.
I don't know what, why I know all the year you're gonna get it. I know I get concrete work.
Well, I mean, I, I just think these details, because, because you understand, what, I'm just going by my engineers, I ask them just to calculate, 'cause there's always questions about money.
I thought it was all settled.
I had no idea it was gonna cost a lot of money, but there was gonna be a, there's always gonna be a cost, and I don't think it was ever talked about, who's gonna pay for that cost? I think that has, hasn't been decided.
No, and that was a question I raised to you, Tim, when we talked recently. When he told me it was ninety-five hundred dollars, I said, "Okay." I, I started going back through my notes and I said, "I know Larry said they were gonna pay for the plaques, but if we don't have anything in this budget right now at this moment for ninety-five hundred dollars to put those plaques on either side." So, I, I guess, like I said, I'm all for this project, but I do think we gotta see, explore if there's a way to do it cheaper, um, or with some volunteerism put into that, or donations. But I also think we have to figure out, you know, maybe it needs to get a little bit more thought and go back to finance and see if we can't bring it forward with a little bit more ex- explanation in particular. I...
But I just wanna be clear, I would not expect the city to put ninety-five hundred dollars in.
And I would love to do it, but it would certainly have to be approved. Yes, ma'am?
But again, I think we should take it back to finance because, um, that part where we're talking about by the Rose Park, that's a block from that, uh, building you're restoring, and that could be a, with the streetscape being, that could be a significant boost to that part of town.
I just tossed that in only because that's gonna be dug up and repoured, and that's an example of where it could be put in with the plans, and there would be no cost then for, for tearing anything up and putting it back. But, but that was just a, that was just a comment. That was not a preference, that was not a mandate, or even a strong suggestion. But if, if, I think Larry's, from what I'm hearing him and Tim now, I guess they didn't have any real discussion about the actual cost of what it was gonna be to put them in at either quadrant. So I think you agree, we gotta sit down and, and iron out some of that. So will you and Tim get together and, and try to come back? Uh, you know, I, I think we have to get, you know, um, if, if they're, if they're asking the council to share some of that or whatever, I think we have to get, since it's not in the budget, get at least, you know, an approval for that. Alderman Schneider?
So, we're not really looking for a motion. What we're looking for is to, um, send this back to maybe the, um, historical, and then to finance, and then to council, to come up with who's paying for what, and can volunteer work do it? Um, and that should be all in there. And I know I was, I'm on historical, we talked about, and I think it should stay uptown at the square, that's where it originally came from, but get the true costs of what it's going to take to get this done. And then, like I said, forward this back, or send this back to the historical so we can talk about it. Then, I guess it'll have to go to engineering since Tim is involved in it, then finance, and then city council.
Well, I think Larry and Tim need to have a meeting, and, and I'll certainly be glad to sit with you and see if we can put our heads together. And then I think at, at a minimum, it needs to go back to finance if we're going to ask the city to share in something that's not in the budget. Uh, I, I certainly don't disagree. I think there's many more people at our festivals and at our various events downtown that I think they will be seeing a lot more on the quadrants or the square. I don't think there's any doubt, so I support that. I just said that about the new sidewalk because that's an example of some new sidewalk that's gonna be poured in the not-too-distant future. But, uh, if you and Tim will get together, let us know and we'll put it back on the appropriate agenda. And if you get it hashed out, uh, i- if the city's gonna contrib- uh, contribute something, I think maybe then it has to go to finance quickly, but it can be back here and we can move this forward. Okay? Yes, sir?
Let's see what it's, take it back to finance, let's see what it's gonna cost, and if they want it on the sidewalks, we'll see if we can raise some money.
Well, that's a thought, too. I mean, that's, that's a thought, too. I mean, um, when, when Larry first came to me with the idea of the sidewalks, I just simply said, "Uh, we're gonna have to get some ideal cost." And I don't think Tim ever got a cost, 'cause you could probably only put one plaque per square of concrete, I imagine, so you'd have to top, with however number you have there. What is it, how many plaques first time?
We'll have six plaques, and that's the first class, so they'll be together.
So you'd have six, uh...
There'll be one title plaque, and then five that go.
Okay, so we'd have six section of sidewalk, uh, six, you know, what are they, what are usually, Tim, what's the, what's the size of those dimension? What's the dimension of those slabs downtown?
Five by five.
So we'd have, we'd have six of the five by five, had to tear out and pour back in. Uh, I think we oughta get that price, so we know.
But all five, they're all gonna go on one slab, right? I don't think we'd have to tear them all, 'cause they are...
We would be able to get more than...
Well, let's look at it. Take a look at it and see if that looks spread and it looks decent. Alderman White?
I think it's probably appropriate just to table the issue for this meeting and come back with, uh, when we have a little bit better...
I think we come back with an update, and if it has to go, you know, a, a proposal. I'd, I'd, so I'd ask for a motion to table.
Second, I may not make the motion.
Okay, okay. Raise your hand. Raise your hand. Alderman White hit his hand up first.
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion to table. And Alderman Schneider, were you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, and we'll come back at the next meeting. We'll keep it on the agenda for an update as to how we might proceed. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I think it would go to finance, a little bit of cost on the sidewalk.
Yeah, he, we'll, we'll move it forward here after we get a little bit more information. And Tim, you and Larry will get together? Okay, look, give us some options as to some, and, and probably a little bit more detail and cost. Okay, we move on. There's no resolutions, there's no ordinances. This might be a first, uh, in a long time. Unfinished business. Yes, ma'am?
Um, in our packet was a memo from the city attorney about something that was brought up at the last meeting about the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and I'd like to have this put into the minutes of this meeting, 'cause...
Okay.
That we are doing it the proper way and there was no laws being broken, and that should be made abundantly clear.
Okay, if you wanna give that, or you got it?
You got it, obviously, I was...
Okay. Alderman Hayden?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things I had under, under unfinished business, but, uh, first the response to that, uh, I, I don't necessarily agree, Your Honor, that I interpret the memo from the, uh, uh, city attorney is that we are doing it the proper way. Uh, I, I think if you read the last paragraph, he's stating that we need to make a final decision. Um, one of the questions that, uh, came to mind, uh, in, in reviewing the memo, that I'd like to ask the city attorney, in reviewing, you, you cited, uh, case law, Mr. Horner. Uh, were those Supreme Court decisions?
I don't have the memo in front of me, I'd have to look, but they're, I mean, they're, they're binding, uh, either appellate court or Supreme Court decisions, yes.
Uh, was there any case law, uh, that would, uh, counter that? In other words, decisions made the, uh, opposite way as relates to, uh, challenges that you've seen?
No, there's only one case that I saw about challenging it, and they made a determination that it wasn't a procedural due process violation, but that was persuasive authority that came out of the U.S. District Court from the Northern District of Shaq- of Illinois.
Okay, but you, but without seeing it, you wouldn't know if it was the...
I'm telling you, that's what my research revealed.
Okay. But you don't know if the, the Supreme Court actually made a final decision on that?
You know, I, I'd have to look at the memo. I didn't, I didn't anticipate that we were gonna further discuss this.
I didn't either.
I provided that memo on, uh, Thursday, and I hadn't heard anything from any of the, anybody on the council.
I, I wasn't planning on either, but, uh, the statement was made that we're, we're doing it as proper, and I don't, uh, I don't...
Well, actually, if you look...
I don't believe that's what you're saying there.
The case that I cited was a, uh, Second District of Illinois case, that's from the Illinois Appellate Court, but it relies upon a Illinois Supreme Court case.
So...
Stuff on the back.
What you're saying in, in that memo is, is the, the fact that, uh, we, what we're doin', 'cause I, I'd like to know, you, you stated at, at the last meeting, you know, that you really couldn't expound upon the appointments that were made before. How did you, you know, what documents or staff or elected officials did you talk to, either current or past, that allows you to make the, uh, infer, inference that, uh, you assume, if I was reading it right, that, uh, we were making these appointments under home rule? What, what allows you to come to that conclusion?
I didn't say that I assumed it. What I did, I, if, I mean, the memo speaks for itself, but, uh, you know, that, uh, the statute that was raised, there was case law that interpreted that statute that provided that a home-rule municipality is empowered to provide for appointments of fire and police commissioners contradictory to the requirements of Section ten dash two-point-one dash three. I was informed, because, again, I reiterated that, uh, these appointments preceded my appointment of city attorney, and so I'm not familiar with the circumstances underlying that, but I was informed at that meeting that there weren't any party affiliation affidavits that had been filed. So, based upon that, it appears that such appointments, as approved by the city council, would be intended to be an exercise of home rule authority. If, if the city council wants to suggest otherwise, I, I mean, I would, I would listen to that from a city council who enacted the appointments before I was here. But what I'm telling you is that you have the home rule authority to provide for appointments of fire and police commissioners contradictory to the requirements of Section ten dash two-point-one dash three. That's the status of Illinois law.
Right.
I cite the cases that provide for that. I recommended that during the course of recodification, that if there's any, uh, ambiguity as to what the intent of the council is, just as we're going to address all of your ordinances, I suggested that under your, for instance, under your boards and commissions, that you memorialize whatever the intent of the council is, just like, just like anything else you're gonna do with recodification. I think it's a benefit of recodification to clarify anything that, that you would consider to be ambiguous, if you so consider it.
'Cause I don't think anybody here even knew that, that, I certainly didn't know that that law existed, so I don't, I...
I, I wasn't here, so I don't know what anybody knew at that time.
I, I, if, if nobody didn't know that the law existed, it's, it's hard for me to construe that the intent of, of the appointments were to be done, uh, you know, exercising the home rule authority, 'cause if, if, if we were doing that and we understood that, then obviously, then we should've had the proper affidavits filed with the city clerk.
Not if you're exercising home rule authority.
There'd be no need.
You wouldn't need it. It's if you're not exercising home rule authority, then you would have the party affiliation affidavits filed. But since you didn't, I would hope that you were exercising home rule authority.
I, I have a question.
And, and again, I go, I, I go, I go back to, to, uh, what the goal is, is resolving this issue.
Right.
You know, I'm a solution-oriented person. I'm gonna give you legal advice that's going to resolve any issue that you may have, for instance, with this matter. And I told you in the memo what the status of the law is and, and what I would recommend to so resolve this issue.
Appreciate that. Um, I, I had asked, uh, a while back, I don't know if you had a chance to, to look at, uh, did, did we ever get a answer as to if the, the Realtor or trust that was involved with the, uh, church property on North Thirteenth Street, if they, uh, ever received commission, what their role was?
I did discuss that with, uh, Eric, and, and he indicated that there was no, no Realtor associated with that transaction.
I don't recall any, either. And Eric researched it.
Okay. Um, the memos that you had issued previously to, to me, I don't know if Dr. Sillsby got a copy in relation to the information with TIF ten, I had asked you if those responses were privileged. Uh, I never got a response because we were having a meeting tomorrow night, uh, with economic development, and next week, Monday, uh, with, uh, finance, and there's information in those that I, I think might, uh, be pertinent to that discussion.
The, the opinions that are provided to you are privileged. Now, if there's specific information, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting about any attachments, or s- some things are factual in nature that would be subject to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. But I, my answer would be dependent upon what specific information that you want to disclose.
And based on that, I would ask Eric maybe to step up here at the end of the meeting, uh, so that if Garrett has some specific advice based on Joe's questions for tomorrow night, that we follow that, okay?
Correct, right. I wanna make sure we're, um, I had also previously asked, uh, in relation, now, Mayor, you can answer this, I, I know that they've started, uh, their construction out there, but we don't pay, uh, rural foods for the demolition money until it's actually built, correct?
When the demolition was complete, they, then they submit the proper paperwork. Has that been done already, Eric? It's been done.
Okay, I'll have to go back and check the agreement. I thought we didn't pay them until the whole project was built, but I, I could be wrong. Um, but I'd asked the city attorney, looking back at that, the motion, when it was approved, it was a seven-seven vote, mayor broke the tie to make it eight-seven. My question is, uh, would such a vote take a nine corporate majority vote? In other words, it needs a corporate majority of nine votes, which it did not get.
You know, that, that's something that I'm looking into because, uh, again, this was an, this was something that arose before, uh, I was the city attorney, but initially looking at the minutes, um, when you're talking about the concurrence of the, of the majority of the corporate authorities, are you talking about with the expenditure of funds?
Yeah, 'cause it was, it, it was either passed by resolution or ordinance, and I, 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 my understanding is that those type of things take a, a corporate majority, which we mean nine votes.
And in that particular case, it was eight to, to seven?
Correct.
And I believe that there was an alderman also that voted present in that case, so under the process rule, which is a...
Now, there's two, I think, two absent.
No, I believe there was one, when I reviewed the minutes, that voted present at that. I'd have to go back and, was that you, Alderman Heisler? And in that event, I can tell you that under the process rule, if the, if you have an, uh, somebody who abstains or votes present on a vote that requires merely the concurrence of the majority of the, of the city council, that that vote goes with the majority, which would, in that case, make it nine. Uh, but that's something that, you know, I, I wasn't here, that's something I've, I did get an opportunity to look at the minutes, and that's something I can, I can put, put in writing for you, but, you know, the process rule would provide that in concurring votes, the, uh, an abstention or a vote of present, which is essentially a non-vote, goes with the majority.
And I'm sure you're looking into the follow-up question I had in relation to Ten East Washington?
I am.
Okay. Um, and let's see, Your Honor, uh, last thing I got, uh, under, I, I've submitted the, uh, um, corrections for the, uh, the minutes, uh, I just wanna state, uh, again, uh, there was stated at the beginning of the meeting by the, uh, the police chief that, uh, that by the, the police chief that this was a ambush. I was not part of any ambush last Monday. To, to even state as such to me is absurd. The only thing I wanted was information, especially when it's presented to me at that juncture, that, you know, we have to do this tonight. I would say in the last three and a half years, we've had at least 50 votes that we got to do it tonight or there's no tomorrow. And that has been a major frustration of mine with you and, and your administration and as it relates to communication. The fact that we went from June to July to August with no communication of where we stand with the staff and that we are down is, is a problem with me. And my frustration, to be candid, was with you. In relation to committees, I never spoke about anything about vetting, never spoke about anything about, I'm not on a police and fire committee right now. The one thing I did speak to is the fact that I know the years when I was on the city council before, and my recollection is that if we have a police and fire committee and finance committee and city council committee, those are the committees that should be involved with those processes. And if we're not following that process, then I think we need to look into why we're not doing that. Because if, your own words were that the police and fire committee oversees personnel, will hire in new...
No, I said policy.
Policy, you said personnel and grievances. If you go back and listen, I've watched the tape twice. The, but the biggest thing is that disturbs me is the whole situation of the fact that, again, hidden, conspiracy, all of those words, I never used those words, Mayor. Maybe, maybe Freud could figure out why those were the words that came to, to your head, but I never used them, never questioned anything to, to that nature, never said it, never thought it. It was merely not happy with the fact that here we are sitting here on a Monday and we got to do it today because in two days, it's the deadline.
And I think we explained, the chief and I both, that with the timing of the class and getting the people sworn in was the reason that the timing, and the fact that a couple of candidates at the last minute backed out or didn't pass, they had a lot of difficulty getting to the three that we swore in and hired.
Your Honor, you fully did. We fully covered it. I just want to state for the record, because I have no grudges here. I, I don't take, take it personal. I'm just stating that during that timeframe, you know, we, we sent out a memo to committees saying that we're canceling the police and fire committee, we're canceling this committee. There's various different emails that go out. You know, during that timeframe, we could have very easily updated the city council stating that, you know, by the way, we're down one, especially when we got down three, and state that just for your information, there may be a need for a special city council meeting. And, and that's all we're asking for, is to be informed of what is going on. I, I just think that there's nothing wrong with asking that and asking for better communication, especially when we are down three police officers, which I've made it more than clear that is very important to me.
And, and I will say again, as I said the other night, I was not the one who asked to cancel the meeting because there wasn't any particular business. It was the police chief and the fire chief who made that recommendation. So you must think that I have, I make all those decisions.
I never said that.
The committee, the department heads put together the agenda for those, those meetings of, of the committees. Now, many times, they run them past me. And the chief did say, we have no business and we're not ready with any decisions. Do you, we're going to cancel the meeting. He made me aware of it, but, but I can tell you, you got upset with me at that meeting, last, last council meeting. And unfortunately, Chief Clay took it somewhat personal that some of those comments were at him. I didn't, we didn't have a discussion ahead of time. We didn't know this was coming up. So I didn't tell Chief Clay to stand up there and I didn't tell him to express his concerns or stand up for me. That wasn't at all the case. Those comments coming from him were true from him, not from me.
I'm, I'm not disputing that, Mayor.
Okay, well, you...
I just want to make sure you understand that, 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 yeah, some of it is coming from him, but there's, there seems to still be a misconception of what my feelings are intended. And just as I can't read, you have statements made, you know, I can't read people's minds. Well, neither can I. And certainly, people can't read mine. I want to make it very clear. I had, was never questioning that there was anything hidden or there was anything conspiracy. I was questioning the communication. And if you go back and look, I just read the record to you earlier in the meeting, if you go back and watch the tape, you're the one that said, there's nothing hidden here. Never said it.
I'll have to go back and read, watch it again. It'd be, I'm sure, enlightening.
I'm sure will.
Alderman Schmidt?
I'd just like to clarify. I wanted that memo put in because the reporter's not here tonight, but according to the paper account of our meeting, it sounded like the city was doing something wrong. And I don't think by this we are. If we are a home rule city, isn't every action we take home rule?
Unless, unless we say otherwise.
Unless we state otherwise, so.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. I have four things. One, I received a little card in the mail asking me, are they going to put on the ballot about the treasurer's job being eliminated? I mean, I guess the people are watching or listening, so whoever sent this to me, I would like to state that I have asked at the city council meeting, are we going to be putting it on the ballot to eliminate or keep the treasurer's position? Next, I'd like to know where we're at on the pool. What kind of minutes can we look at to see what people have said about meetings that you've had with the pool, with getting a new pool for the city of Belleville? Number three, this one's kind of important, I think. Since there's going to be a public hearing scheduled for St. Elizabeth's, I was wondering, because we're all invited, should we sit together and show that we're going to work together at this and we're at the front line stating we're all on the same page, that we want to keep St. Elizabeth's here? Or should it be like, well, if we all attend this meeting, one sit here, one sit there? Should we not be sitting together as a front at this meeting? I was suggesting maybe reserve 16 seats for the aldermen and one for the treasurer, the attorney, and the mayor and the city clerk. It just would show that we're all on this together. And what kind of questions maybe could we be suggested so that maybe we're not all coming up with the same questions and comments, that we stand as a front and united at this? Maybe that's the word I should use, that we're standing united on this project. I think that's the way we should do it, instead of, yes, we all bicker here, we all fight here, but that's city council meetings, that's government. But when it comes to something this important, I think we should stand united and show that we are all caring about this project. And my next thing is on the recodification. I don't know if I pronounced that right or not. Have we, have you decided on a person to do this yet or not? Because I had a very, I call it important to a lot of the people in my neighborhood and me with the solicitation. And at the meeting, it was suggested that it goes back and it would be dealt with when the recodification is done on this. I think this is something that shouldn't have to wait a year to a year and six months to be taken care of. Because with the fine being $5, if someone wanted to argue it with the judge, even though the, this was some of the things we discussed the other night, the judge could say, well, it's $100. But the person that's being charged could say, well, your ordinance says minimums $5. I would like to see that come back to ordinance and legal. And that's what we're there, the ordinance and legal committee is there for, is to do some of this. We should not have to wait for the recodification because it could be a year plus before this is ever done.
Okay, I mean, you did, this was presented, it was listened to.
Yes, it was.
And the committee, and the committee agreed to...
Send it and wait for recodification.
Right.
But I think this is something that we shouldn't wait that long on. I mean, if, I'm not, I'm sure it's not only my neighborhood is tired of this solicitation problems. And it does bring in sometimes bad elements. And I'm not saying everyone is, but we need to kind of look out for our people. Because if you look at how many people get on a no-call list, they don't want to be bothered with this. And if we're not going to, maybe we could get a no solicitation list that the, when they're out soliciting.
And I think the city attorney stated that night that the two things people could do would post their...
We, we address the, the opportunities for people to avoid solicitation. We address the legal applications of various case law. And I would note that it's contemplated that there would be a recommendation made to the ordinance legal committee at its next meeting as to a codification service provider.
And we plan to, at the next monthly newsletter, put a, I plan to put a paragraph in there reminding folks that if they do not want solicitation, that they need to post a sign at their door that says solicitor's not welcome. And they also need to say on their no trespassing. And then if they come to their door, the police chief admitted that night that a charge of no trespassing, if properly posted, could then be signed, correct? So that was one suggestion of how we might handle that. Because there is case law that gives, as Alderman, as, as our city attorney Horner said, that the courts do give solicitors quite a bit of leeway unless people post it as no solicitor's not welcome.
Well, yes, I understand. I was very appreciative of Chief Clay coming because it was like he was the, came and nothing really resolved because it's going to be done. But I think we need to bring that back to ordinance and legal and see what we can do to get it a little bit going before the recodification. And I have a question. Charter was out the other night and he said he had his list of his customers. He did not need a solicitor's license. Is this true?
We have, Charter is a recognized city service that we've chosen for...
So they can be out door-to-door?
I don't know, are they door-to-door or they fixing things?
No, no, no. This was a guy out and I asked him, because I followed him down the street for four houses.
I didn't, I never heard about that.
Well, I didn't call because it doesn't do any good. I mean, what are we going to do? He had nothing, he had no name, no nothing on him. He had no solicitation license. And he said he didn't need any because he has his list of customers that he's going to.
If he had appointments, if he had appointments, that's different. If, if he had appointments with those people and they agreed to letting him know he was going to stop by, people can make an appointment and they can come after dark if they want an appointment. But if, if you think that Charter is violating the not getting background checked, et cetera, then you need to get me the date and time this occurred and we'll contact our government liaison from Charter and we'll have him look into it.
Okay.
First I heard of it. Okay, anything else under old business? Okay, let me see where we're at. Miscellaneous and new business. Okay, motor fuel claims in the amount of $63,131.13. What's your pleasure?
The claims be paid, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second. Second by Alderman Hayden, discussion on the motor fuel claims. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So...
Motion by Alderman Schmidt to go into executive session for the stated reason on the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kinsella. Any discussion? All in favor of going into executive session for the said reasons as printed on your agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, Tim, would you...
You the last one, Alex?
Okay, we are now back in open session. And as stated on the agenda, we have a possible motion to approve change order for the needed repairs regarding the project at 17 South High. I would ask for a motion to approve a change order with Calhoun Construction. And there's two parts to this, that the first change order is for $12,478. And this is to deal with the, the structural crack that is in the building that was up against the demolition building we took down. To properly, per the, as in your report, per the structural engineer's recommendation, that this would be the cost to properly deal with this in the proper masonry fashion. The second part of this motion I'm asking that you consider is to spend $2,183.50, give Mr. Calhoun permission to add that to the change order so that two coats of Sherman Williams masonry paint and tuck pointing can be provided where necessary to do a complete job of tying the new brickwork in that was completed with the rest of the older remaining wall after the crack is addressed and make a finished product. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Seibert to approve those two change orders.
Second.
Second by Alderman White.
Good.
Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.